Good evening. My name is Marisa Bono, Chief Strategic Officer for Via Metropolitan Transit. O prima estrella cero ahora para escuchar en español. Thank you for joining our live interactive Teletown Hall. Tonight's topic is focused on Via Metropolitan Transit and the millennial generation here in San Antonio. This event and others will give us a chance to speak to you directly and answer as many of your questions as possible. For our phone participants this evening, we'd like to invite you to watch the live stream by visiting keepsamoving.com. Scroll down to the streaming player toward the bottom of the page. Since the 1950s, American car culture has grown generation after generation, particularly in sprawling communities that have continued to expand outwards from dense downtowns. But the millennial generation has bucked the trend, and study after study has shown that younger Americans are less likely to be enticed by car ownership. That means that other forms of transportation, like rideshare and mass transit, are incredibly important as we face future growth. With me tonight to discuss this important topic are a few experts on transportation and the millennial generation. Please welcome Akeem Brown, Via Board Trustee and Board Secretary, Marina Alerete Gavito, Via Board Trustee and Executive Committee Member, and Alex Brunel, the Advocacy Manager for Move Texas, a nonpartisan nonprofit that focuses on civic engagement with the millennial generation. Thank you for being with us tonight.
Thanks for having us.
We're looking forward to a great conversation, and we hope you'll dial *3. That's *3 to enter the queue to ask questions live on this call. O prima estrella cero ahora para escuchar en español. As I mentioned, this is an interactive forum, and we'd love to hear from you. We'll be taking as many questions from participants tonight as we possibly can live on this event. If you have a question, press *3 on your phone keypad at any time. You'll be placed in line to speak with a member of our staff. After that, the next time you hear your name, you will be live on the call, and you can ask your question directly. If you're streaming the event on our website, just type your name and question below the streaming player. Alex, I'd like to start with you. You're a prominent community organizer and advocacy manager at Move Texas. You currently live in San Antonio, Texas. Tell us about your work and your mission at Move Texas.
Sure. Thank you, Marisa. So my name is Alex Brunel. I'm the Advocacy Manager at Move Texas. Move Texas is an organization that registers voters all across the state of Texas to build power all across our communities. We do that work primarily on college campuses, but we do it across cities as well. And we register those voters so that we can build the power in the state of Texas. One of the reasons we want to do that is because we believe that the issues millennials care about should be represented in politics. One of the things that millennials tell us they care about a lot is transit, right? We recognize that we're not a car-dependent generation like we used to be. We're facing economic inequality. We're facing higher levels of debt than previous generations. So we're making a lot of adjustments in the way that we live our lives, including focusing on transit.
Thank you for that. I've seen you and the work of your colleagues in action. I admire your work. I admire your passion. What are the different ways that you see transit aligning with your work when it comes to trying to engage young voters?
Sure. So it's very necessary for there to be infrastructure for civics to take place. One of the things that's very important is that people are able to go to places like polling locations, to go to their universities, to get registered to vote, to go to class. So it's very critical that we have the infrastructure in place for people to move about the city, because if people can't move about the city, they can't participate in these systems. We also know that San Antonio millennials, according to a study done by LendingTree, are some of the most indebted in the country. They have the highest levels of student loan debt, the highest levels of auto loan debt. So we understand the risks financially that being car-dependent produces for our population. So we know that both owning a car and not having access to transit are issues that we need to focus on and care about as a community if we want to be active civic participants.
Thank you for that. And again, this is a live Teletown Hall. It's a live interactive event. You can press *3 on your phone keypad at any time. You'll be placed in line to speak with a member of our staff. After that, next time you hear your name, you will be live on the show. Alex, you just talked about the importance of access to infrastructure when engaging young voters. Just want to take this opportunity to remind everyone, Via will be providing free rides to the polls on November 3rd. All you need is a current voter registration card, and you will get a free ride to the poll. This is something that we do every election cycle to support our community residents. Marina, let's talk a little with you next. The millennial generation typically that's defined as those who were born in the early 80s and 2003. This generation is the largest and most diverse generation in American history. Millennials have, you know, the hallmarks are a relative propensity for urban lifestyle, whether they live in cities or suburbs, and a certain dexterity with technology. So I think you exemplify that profile in so many ways. You're a hometown girl. You grew up here in San Antonio. You went away for college to Chicago. You worked as an executive, as a professional in Chicago. Then you came back to serve your community as a co-founder at TechBlock, and now you're an executive at USAA. Can you tell us a little bit about how your experience in Chicago, learning and working in another city informed your work now in transit?
Yeah, absolutely. So I lived in Chicago for five years and didn't have a car at all. And it was wonderful, you know, just being able to hop on the buses and hop on the rail to go to work and to go to school. Then when I moved back to San Antonio, I realized you have to have a car payment. You have insurance. You have car maintenance. You have gas. And that actually takes a chunk out of your paycheck. And I started realizing how smart taking public transportation is. You know, I think in Texas, sometimes there tends to be a stereotype because Texans love their cars and they love their trucks, and we're very car-dependent. We have a car-dependent culture. But I think that when you move to big cities and you see how other people move around their city, you're like, it makes sense to take public transportation. Now, all that to say is, we need to invest in our public transportation here in Texas so that it can be frequent and reliable as it is in bigger cities.
You know, a common misperception I hear in the community here in San Antonio, and in Texas, because we have such a prominent car culture, is that Via is trying to force people out of their cars, when in reality, our Keep SA Moving Plan, our strategic plan, is focused on giving San Antonio residents options. You don't have to get rid of your truck. You don't have to get rid of your car. Via simply provides an option, an alternate option for those days when taking a car is inconvenient or it's tough economic times if you lose access to a vehicle, if you lose a vehicle in your household. We want transit to be an option for San Antonio families. Learn more about our strategic plan called Keep SA Moving at keepsamoving.com. Akeem, let's chat a little bit with you. You're a millennial. You're a passionate supporter of mass transit, and you're a Board Trustee for Via. Tell us where that drive comes from.
Yeah. Well, one, thank you all for participating on tonight's call, and thank you for having me. I'm a true, you know, passionate member of the Advocates for Public Transit. You know, I come from Brooklyn, New York, born and raised. So much like Marina, I've lived in large cities, and I lived in a large city most of my life, growing up in Brooklyn. I had to take transit since third grade. And so a train and a bus was how I got to most of my opportunities. That's how I had access. You know, what pushes me for that drive when I came to San Antonio? I wanted to park my car, right? I wanted to park my car and get on a bus, but the frequency piece was an issue. And so when I decided to become a member of the Board, it was because I knew that growth was coming to San Antonio. I knew by 2040, we were going to have 3 million-plus residents in this community. I knew that San Antonio is rapidly growing and ranked number two as far as growing economies across the country. But I also knew that I didn't want to be stuck in traffic. So how do I match that passion and that drive with some strategic solutions? And so I knew that that meant being a member and being passionate as a member of the Board of Trustees. So I'm here today because I know what's coming. I know what's coming. I feel it. I've been there, and I want to be a part of making sure that we have solutions for it.
Thank you for that, and thank you both to Akeem and Marina for your service on the Board. Your insights are always incredibly invaluable, and we appreciate how close you are to our communities. I feel that both of you always bring that perspective to the Board. Okay, I'd like to go ahead and go now to our first live caller. Just a reminder that this is an interactive session. If you have a question, you can press *3 on your phone keypad right now. You'll get in the queue. You'll speak to a member of our staff. And then the next time you hear your name, you will be live. And let's go ahead and start with Marilyn. Marilyn has a question tonight. Go ahead, Marilyn. You're live.
Yes, I would like to throw out the idea of us possibly having a subway system. Our city is growing by leaps and bounds. We have, our homes are being built far, far along down I-10 West. Along, we have massive growth going on in multiple segments. This might help alleviate traffic headaches. This certainly would help people get around easier. There would be very little or no pollution involved. The only thing is, yes, it is going to cost a lot of money, and it will take a lot of planning. But New York City has had a subway for years, as has Boston. I mean, as has Washington DC, the San Francisco Bay Area, London, Paris, and various other cities around the world. You can get around easily in London in minutes. I did it last summer, just by using the subway, you know, and it's very easy to use. And it can be, the process can be automated to minimize costs.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Marilyn. Sorry to cut you off. We have limited time this evening, but you pose a great question. Why not subway? Why not rail for San Antonio, especially for a community that relies so heavily on tourism? And especially given the fact that we are going to need to bounce back from the economic effects of the pandemic. Marina, you head an innovation committee in your role as Board Trustee at Via. Would you like to offer your thoughts on that question first? Why not subway? Why not rail?
Absolutely. First off, thank you, Marilyn, for asking that question. It's an important one, and it's a great one. I too would absolutely love subway. But you mentioned that it's expensive, and that's the hurdle that we run up against, is that it's so expensive. It's already hard enough to raise funds for public transportation as it is today to operate our buses, that asking the public for a subway is just, it's a tall order. Now, one of the things that Via has done is that we have looked at advanced rapid transit, and that is something that we're looking at in the future. And it's kind of the best of both worlds. If you can imagine dedicated buses in dedicated lanes so that they move almost at the speed of rail and are able to move people quickly. You would pay before boarding the bus, so you're not having to wait for somebody to board and pay. There's a whole lot of benefits with advanced rapid transit, but think of it on buses in dedicated lanes. And so that is something that we're exploring. Another thing, Marisa, that you mentioned with me serving on the Innovation Committee is, we're looking, one of the things that Via did this past year is called Via Link, where we think rideshare meets public transportation in a certain area where it just doesn't make sense to run buses. We partnered with a rideshare company, and you can essentially call the Via Bus, or the Via Shuttle, rather, to come to your house, pick you up, and then they take you to the closest transit center. And then you can go on your way. We've gotten, you know, like I mentioned earlier, we piloted it and got wonderful results. And so we're expanding it further. And now, in the time of COVID, we're looking at expanding that service on anything outside of 410 and really focusing our buses on inside the loop so that they can be more frequent for our customers there. But, you know, those are the different types of things that we're thinking of. Obviously, the pandemic hit us all very hard, and we have to be scrappy and come up with creative solutions on how to move people around. And so that's one of the things we're thinking about.
Yeah, just to give, I see we have a question from Bradley on our live stream. He also asks why we're not considering rail. And I see a number of other questions here along the same lines. Just to give our participants tonight a sense of the scope of cost, Austin, just an hour and a half of the road, has a tax rate increase on the ballot in November that includes both subway and expansion to rail. And the cost for that system is over $5 billion. I just, you know, I think it might be helpful for our participants to know that since 1977, Via has received less sales tax revenue than other large metropolitan transit agencies in Texas. So with the statewide cap on sales tax, which allows 2 cents for local uses, the Texas Legislature designated 1 cent that's available for use to fund public transit by local municipalities like San Antonio. Back in the late 70s, San Antonio opted to use half of that full cent. But our peer agencies, Capital Metro in Austin, Dallas Area Rapid Transit, or DART in Dallas, and Metro in Houston, they all receive a full 1 cent of sales tax. And that sales tax revenue over time, over the past decades, has allowed them to leverage for these larger projects and larger investments like rail and subway. Alex, you work with a lot of young, engaged, civically engaged young people in the San Antonio area and really throughout the state. What are your thoughts? Can Via attract younger riders without rail? And if so, what are some of the things that Via can do to attract millennials to use our service?
Yeah, thank you, Marisa. So I think the more ergonomic that we can make the app easier and more friendly and more integrated, we can make our digital tools as a transit authority, then we can attract millennials to use it. We want to know the same thing that every other transit rider wants to know, that we can reliably use the service to get to places where we want to go and that it doesn't disrupt the flow of our social lives. I think, you know, building the value of transit so that it's not simply about work, but also about recreation. We talk a lot about the use of transit by folks that are more in need or more transit-dependent. But I think there's also a view of transit as luxury that millennials are very interested in, and a luxury created by, as Marina mentioned, not having to spend money on the car, money on the gas, understanding that millennials are more spend-thrift, that those are some of the different ways that you can angle the transit position to be more appealing to millennials, based on the conversations that I've had.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Alex. And just so our participants know tonight, the Keep SA Moving Plan is designed to provide more mobility-on-demand service. This is a service that acts very similar to rideshare. You can summon a vehicle through either the app, through a telephone line, or through the website, and you can get to wherever you want to go in the designated zone, or you can get to a transit center so that you can take a bus to where you want to go in another part of town. The difference between that service and rideshare is you can do it all for the cost of a Via bus fare. So definitely more cost-efficient for those who are watching their budget, especially in the current economic times. So I'm going to go ahead and go to another live call now. This is an interactive forum. We want to hear your questions. If you have a question, press *3 at any time to get in the queue. You'll speak to a member of our staff, and then the next time you hear your name, you will be live. Let's go now to Kenneth. Go ahead. You're live.
Hi. A few years back, Via had a sales tax increase request on the ballot, which I voted for and went to the Union Hall and got it signed to put in the front yard. And one of the promises with that was late-night bus service. And I believe the tax increase passed. The late-night bus service turned out to be contracted taxis, which had a lot of restrictions on it, and I believe was a total disaster as it didn't last, I don't even think it lasted a year, maybe six months. So my question is, beyond the 12:30 lineup buses that go out late night, to accommodate people that go out for entertainment at night, people who, the millennials, the people who work downtown, what is the plan to extend late-night service beyond 12:30 PM?
Thank you for that question, Kenneth. Akeem, would you like to handle that question first?
Yeah, Kenneth, I wasn't, unfortunately, I wasn't here in San Antonio when that last vote happened, so I don't have much information around that. But I'm doing some digging as you speak to learn more about that piece. But I will tell you that from my perspective, you know, it's definitely about all times of day. As we continue to grow, as we continue to increase, we have to talk about what that looks like as far as services. For me, it's about connecting more people to services and jobs, right? That does mean post 10 o'clock. That could very well mean our service industry, our hotelers, and many of our other downtown businesses, individuals having to, you know, ride home or get a safe ride home. That's post 10 o'clock, right? So Via is definitely committed to taking a look at what our late-night services look like. I think it's also interesting to tag a piece of this to the fact that we're really looking at our mobility-on-demand, as Marisa mentioned earlier. We're taking a look at how we could streamline these services for individuals who are looking for those more unique times and services, or what I may consider unique today, which won't be unique a few years from now for so many San Antonians. So ART, HOV lanes, extended services at night, mobility-on-demand, all these innovative packages will really help meet every customer that we can possibly meet in San Antonio. I would love to learn more about what that tax increase was and what happened so that I could have a look at that. But do know that in the Keep SA Moving Plan, we do address late-night service. We address weekend service, and we talk about some capital improvements that will help increase the frequency of those services.
Absolutely. The Keep SA Moving Plan is designed to do a number of things, but top of the list is to expand late-night and weekend service. San Antonio's economy is unfortunately based on low-wage jobs. And that means, and I should add, a majority of Via riders are low-wage workers. And so what that means is we have a lot of riders and people who are transit-reliant, who don't have those typical nine-to-five jobs, or they might be working multiple jobs, and they need the support late at night and early in the morning to access those economic opportunities. So go to keepsamoving.com to get more information about how that plan will expand or is designed to expand late-night and weekend service. I should also add that the caller may have referenced the ballot initiative that we have pending in November. The Prop A, you'll see it as Prop A on the November ballot. This would not be a tax increase. Instead, it would reallocate 1-8 cent sales tax and shift it over to Via's use starting in 2026. It's a reallocation of an existing tax. It is not a tax increase. Okay, let's go ahead and go to a poll question for our audience. The first poll question of the night is, "The Keep SA Moving Plan includes several objectives to expand transit access in San Antonio, including planning for advanced rapid transit. What type of transit do you most frequently use? Press 1 for core bus service with improved frequency and transit time. Press 2 for Via Link, which works like rideshare services. Press 3 for future advanced rapid transit running in dedicated lanes." Again, the question is, what type of transit would you most frequently use? Press 1 for core bus service with improved frequency. 2 for Via Link, which works like rideshare. And 3 for future advanced rapid transit running in dedicated lanes. All right, we're going to go ahead and tally up the results of that poll question. Just a reminder, this is a live interactive Teletown Hall. You can press 3 to get in the queue to ask your question. You'll be met by a member of our staff, and then the next time you hear your voice, you will be live. Let's go ahead and go to our live callers now. I have Curtis here. Go ahead, Curtis. You're live.
Yeah, hi. I'm a regular rider of Via Transport Buses, and I hope to improve the frequency and the regularity of the buses. My question is, given the fact that, at least temporarily, increased funding seems to have been pushed back, what is Plan B? Because I think it itself is recognized, it needs to improve its service, and it needs resources to do that. Is there a Plan B to be able to seek new funding in the short term?
Thank you for that call, that question, Curtis. Marina, would you like to handle that one first?
Yeah, sure. Well, we really hope that the community can come out for Proposition A coming up in November, because, like I mentioned earlier, with the pandemic, I mean, it's hit all of us, and public transportation being one of those industries that's facing tough times. Like Marisa mentioned earlier, not only is Via already underfunded, you know, we're trying to look to at least catch up with our peer cities in Texas in terms of funding. That way, we can offer more frequent and reliable service. And again, I also want to reiterate that Proposition A that you would be voting for in November does not include a sales tax increase. But to answer your question, Curtis, if we don't get the support that we need in November, it's going to be some tough times and some tough decisions. We have had very real conversations about service potentially being cut and having to look at how we can maintain and operate on the budget that we have. But it's not a pretty picture. And so we really need the community to come out and support us in November.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So just to be clear, so everyone knows what we're talking about right now, Via and city leaders collaborated on timing to invest the 1-8 cent sales tax revenue. This is 1-8 cent of a full cent that was originally designated by the Texas Legislature in the 1970s for public transit. San Antonio dedicated half a penny. The rest of the half has been used to fund other priorities. The 1-8 cent would, if both initiatives pass, Prop A and Prop B, if they both pass in November, voters would initially shift the 1-8 cent sales tax to workforce assistance, a workforce recovery plan that would be sponsored by the city and run by the city. And then in 2026, that tax would shift to Via in perpetuity to improve and expand our transit service here in San Antonio. So to be clear, we're not just going to be sitting on our laurels during that time. If the referendum passes, we're going to be focused on the objectives that are set out in the Keep SA Moving Plan. You can learn more at keepsamoving.com. The goals of the plan are to increase frequency, late-night and weekend service, and to expand more innovative options for transit like mobility-on-demand, and hopefully lay the groundwork for advanced rapid transit later on, which is a dedicated corridor system that looks like rail and rides like, looks like a bus, but rides like rail. Thanks for that. I'm going to go ahead and go now to a question that we received on Facebook or the live streaming player from Johnny. And Johnny is asking, "With most colleges and universities around San Antonio attending class through distance learning, like Zoom meetings, home learning, how do we get the word out about Keep SA Moving to students who attend these universities and colleges?" Alex, you know, I'd like to go to you first and then to Akeem. I'd like to hear your thoughts on what Via can do to engage with students during this time when people are being encouraged to learn and work from home. It's hard for us to get out in the community when we have to be careful about safety. So what are your suggestions for how we can engage better with students from colleges and universities?
Sure. So I would say, sure, thank you, Marisa. So I would say, get together with those advocates that you know of in your classrooms, in your communities. that you know of in your classrooms, in your community. Get together and coordinate a strategy. One of the things you'll want to do is, you know, if you want to drive attention towards the issue of transit, you can get together and decide that you want to post collectively on social media on the same day using similar language, similar hashtags, to really drive attention on particular dates. And maybe you can use that to drive signups to a particular meeting where you discuss the initiative with your colleagues and you figure out a way that's safe to advocate for what you want to advocate for in a forum that's primarily over digital spaces, even though you can't do it in person, but still allows you to seem coordinated, to seem concerted, like you've done the organizing, which always attracts people towards you because they're looking for strategy, they're looking for people that take issues seriously, and people that have ideas about how to support them. So again, just recommend coordinating with your colleagues, maybe doing a coordinated day of social media action, using that social media action to drive people to a meeting where they can discuss this more in depth and maybe volunteer themselves to engage on social media, maybe share the same content, et cetera. That's usually how, you know, when we want to pursue an initiative around voting or let people know about the deadlines as we do at MOVE, it's usually the approach that we take.
Thank you for that. And Akeem, you've been heavily involved as a VIA Board Trustee in efforts to make sure that our public outreach and public communication is comprehensive, that we're reaching out to groups like students and others. What type of work has the board, what has the board done to ensure that our public engagement is comprehensive and reaching all populations, including students?
Yeah, you know, I'm very proud to say, as a member of the board, we've been able to reach the community by appointing two bodies of, or should we say, two committees, advisory committees to the board that are made up of community members. They are diverse sets of community members, skill sets from certain, in all areas of San Antonio. And we're really proud. It's the VIA Transit Community Council that I serve as a liaison for to the board. We meet and we invite those to, of the public, to join us at our meetings. It's extremely exciting to hear perspectives from all members of our community. And then beyond, you know, the VIA Transit Advisory Council or Community Council, our public, our meetings are public, the board meetings are public, right? And so we encourage each and every member of our community to tune in, you know, join us, make public comment, voice your opinion. We're looking for community members to spread the word, spread the good news, talk about what VIA is doing. And we're more than open to getting you that information. And so, one, a vehicle is our Transit Community Council, which are made up of members of our community. And then you're always invited to our VIA Board of Trustees meetings.
Thank you for that. And just to be clear, if you would like a briefing about the Keep SA Moving Plan, you can go to keepasamoving.com. We are conducting virtual briefings throughout the city where you can hear about the plan and ask questions and get answers from the team on our, in our Government and Community Relations Department. We are hosting live teletown halls like this every other week. It's virtual, also a great, safe way to get engaged. In addition to the VTCC, which will be accepting new applications soon, the board also has an Accessible Transit Advisory Committee, ATAC. This is a group that the board convened to study and review issues concerning the accessibility of VIA programs and services. ATAC has seven community liaison members. They were chosen for their knowledge and experience about transportation issues, which affect both older adults and individuals with disabilities. So two great ways to get involved at VIA, go to Keep SA Moving for more opportunities to both learn about the plan and spread the word and help us educate the community about the plan. All right, we had a poll question a few moments ago, and I have the results here. The question was, "What type of transit would you most frequently use?" Half of our participants tonight said they would use core bus service with improved frequency and transit times. Nineteen percent of our participants today said they would use VIA Link, which works like rideshare services. And 30%, 31% said that they would like to use future advanced rapid transit running in dedicated lanes. Again, this is an interactive teletown hall. If you have a question, you can press star three on your keypad at any time to get in the queue to ask your question. You'll speak with a member of our staff, and then the next time you hear your name, you will be live. And I'd like to go to a live caller now. Teresa, go ahead, you're live.
Thank you for hosting this tonight. And so as an advocate, I use VIA. I do have a car, but I try to use VIA as much as possible. So when I talk to other individuals about why they don't take VIA, there is this perception, and again, I've also traveled to other cities and seen the beauty of just getting on a train and getting on and getting off, and it makes life so much easier, no parking headaches. So when I ask other individuals why they don't use VIA, especially if it passed right in front of their house or if it's 500 steps from them, there's this perception that VIA is for the poor, as they say. And they'll say like, "I'm not poor." So what are some of the innovative ways that VIA is trying to reach out to professionals, executives, not just, again, low wage earners, which is kind of what we talked about a little bit tonight, and the millennials? And so what are some innovative ways that we're reaching out to individuals and asking them to take VIA as a professional, as a mid-wage earner? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Great question. Marina, let's go to you first.
Yeah, Teresa, that's a great question, and I'm right there with you. We say that people like you and I sometimes, where we have a car, but we wanted to take public transportation every once in a while, are called choice riders, right? We have the choice to whether a car or public transportation. I think one of the things that people, I wish more people realized is the time-saving measure that picking public transportation is. I mean, it's awesome. When I had to take the bus to work when we were in the office and going downtown, I mean, you're just working the whole time, or you're on your phone, or you're doing whatever you need to do. You're not stressing out about traffic, you're not paying for parking, you're not stressing to find a parking space downtown. It's awesome. It's an awesome experience. And usually, it got me there probably only 10 to 15 minutes more than it would have if I had driven. I think my commute time in the car, going door to door, parking, was around 25 minutes. On VIA, it was like between 35 and 40 minutes, which is not bad. I mean, I would love to get rid of the hassle of parking and driving. But you raise a good point about how we can get the word out and kind of break the stereotype that public transportation is for the poor. Like, I think that public transportation provides a very needed service to cities and to citizens who can't afford a car. It connects them to opportunities, it connects them to healthcare appointments, and it connects families to each other. There is a very real need that public transportation provides, and we are thankful for that. We're also thankful that public transportation is an environmentally friendly choice. It is a choice that you can take to save time, to save money. Like, there's all of these benefits that public transportation provides that I think all of us, probably a lot of people who have tuned into the call tonight, really just need to raise awareness about with our peers, with our colleagues, and with our friends, that VIA is for us as much as it is for everybody else.
Thank you, Alex. Would you like to add to that?
Yeah, just two things to back Marina up. Namely, that if you use public transit, it's an opportunity, as Marina said, to finish a book that you've been meaning to read, to catch up on the day's news, and the things that professionals really need time in the day to do. We have so many hours that we're losing to driving to work in morning traffic, so many hours that we're losing in evening traffic to get home. And we lose the opportunity to engage in other things, to be able to read, to be able to enjoy the news. So thinking of sitting on that bus should be thought of as a form of luxury, as getting your time back. And I also just want to add that rather than thinking of transit as something we do for a certain demographic of people based on their economic background, we should think of the economy as a whole and understand that those people are also providing services back to us when they go to their jobs. And so, you know, this is really complementary. And so I suggest that we should think about it that way. In addition to the recreation that one can undertake on the bus when they're not worried about operating a vehicle, as well as the additional things that Marina mentioned, that, you know, it's also more eco-friendly because there's less cars on the road that's helping to drive down that traffic and that congestion. So I just wanted to mention those couple of things.
Yeah, you know, that's a great point. During the, when the pandemic first hit and most of the country was under stay-at-home orders from their respective states, most transit agencies saw decreases in ridership of 80 and 90%. VIA also saw a decline in ridership, but our decline was only 45%. On top of that, we know that our typical VIA rider, 72% of our riders work full-time, including at least one weekend day a week. They utilize the bus five to seven days a week. And almost 70% of our riders do live below the federal poverty level, making less than $25,000 per year. So when you take the profile of our typical VIA rider and you put it next to the lesser decline in ridership during the pandemic, that tells us that it's reasonable to conclude that VIA riders were keeping this economy going during the pandemic. They were doing the jobs that could not be done from home. And so in a way, VIA is not providing a service for them. They're providing a service for us. Akeem, anything to add there?
Yeah, I want to acknowledge what Alex said. I think it's extremely important to note that VIA riders are a part of the local workforce. You know, you said it right on target. Many of our riders cannot work from home. And riders are essential to the economy. I think that when we talk about riders as if, you know, there's a choice rider, a non-choice rider, I think everyone should choose to ride public transit. But I think it's important to acknowledge those who have no choice because that's educators, that's health services, that's, you know, construction, manufacturing, that keeps San Antonio moving, pun intended. You know, you have to realize, essential workers, the only way we're going to recover, the only way we're going to continue to be the great city that we are, is to realize that we have opportunity gaps. And the only way to close, or one of those ways of closing opportunity gaps is public transit, right? How do I get there? And you brought up the ATAC Committee. I'm very proud of that committee. I chair that committee. That's the Accessibility Committee. We talk about accessibility. We talk about access. And, you know, the big buzzword across the country and across the world right now is equity. And so when you talk about public transit, you have to understand that that is aligned with equity. And so, again, you know, we can't talk about those in a silo anymore. That's the only way we are going to make this economy bounce back.
Great point. And I, you know what, we're running short on time. Enough for me. Let's, I want to hear from our participants tonight. Let's go to our next poll question. "If voters approved the ballot initiative on November 3 to increase funding for VIA without raising taxes, that new funding would not begin flowing to VIA until January 1, 2026. But the Keep SA Moving Plan outlined short-term priorities that would become, that would come before new funding." Keep SA Moving Plan, you can get more information at the website, keepasamoving.com. And the poll question is, "Which of these short-term priorities do you find most important? Press 1 for connecting more people to jobs and expanding VIA Link. Press 2 for improving customer experience and convenience. Press 3 for maintaining VIA Trans service." And VIA Trans is VIA's paratransit service for folks who are accessibility challenged and can't use our regular bus service. So again, which of these short-term priorities do you find most important? Press 1 for connecting more people to jobs and expanding VIA Link. Press 2 for improving customer convenience. And press 3 for maintaining VIA Trans services. And while we tally up the results of that poll, I want to remind our participants, this is a live, interactive event. You can ask your questions live, press star three, you'll get in the queue, you'll meet a member of our staff, and after that, when you hear your name again, you will be live. We have about 1,500 of our closest friends joining us tonight. Thank you for joining us tonight. And I'd like to go to our next live caller. Raul, go ahead, you're live.
Yeah, hello there. Y'all have VIA Link over in northeast San Antonio, and I live over here on 1604 Interstate 10. And I've been talking to you all for over two years. And recently, I was speaking to Sonia and Priscilla, see if I can get transportation. See if you could get something like a VIA Link over here in 1604 and 10 area. I have, I am a disabled person, am of a senior, and they did use the word "I am for my income." My social security is under $8,000 a month, and I need some help, if I could get transportation. I've left messages for Mr., I believe his name is Jeffrey Arns, who is the CEO, and every time I call his office, they will never let me speak to him. And I've thought maybe I could go over there to the main office, see if I could speak to him, see if he could help me. I have no vehicle transportation, I have no caring family, and see if somebody could help me with transportation over here on the southeast part of San Antonio, 1604 and 10. I would really appreciate it. I need it bad. I just had surgery yesterday, and I've got nowhere to go, no neighbors close to here or anything. Can you help me with something like that?
Raul, thank you so much for your call. Thank you for calling tonight. I have your number. I'm going to follow up with you directly immediately after this event and see what we can do to get you more connected with transit services here in San Antonio. Akeem, would you like to offer a response to Raul's question first?
Of course, of course. First, I want to thank you for reaching out to us, Raul. And please know that Marisa will reach out to you tomorrow or before the week is out, and I'll follow up on that as a board member. I do want you to know that our VIA Trans services is also a service that we would love to discuss and offer to you and check out your eligibility there. But VIA Link is a program and service that, you know, we're piloted or have piloted. We're looking to expand. You're in the footprint. I think it's important to recognize the importance of your needs. You've stated it, you know, your story unfortunately is not unique to most San Antonians. There are people who need VIA, who need to get around. And you're not talking about the luxury. You're talking about necessity. And we're here to meet those needs. So, Raul, one, I want to, again, thank you for reaching out to us. You're the rider, and we care about you. Two, we want to make sure that we connect you to those services. So look out for a call from someone from VIA regarding VIA Trans services or our VIA Link. Thank you for calling us today.
And I should add, Raul, we, you know, the Keep SA Moving Plan was a result of years, three years of community outreach. We contacted thousands of San Antonio residents. We had thousands of survey results. And, you know, your story is so similar to the one that we heard loud and clear. And that is that our residents need a system that's more frequent, more reliable, more accessible, and closer to where they live and work. You mentioned VIA Link in particular. For those who aren't familiar, VIA Link is VIA's Mobility On Demand service. It was launched in 2019 in a 17-square-mile zone on the northeast. Now, the Keep SA, it's a program similar to Rideshare. You can access a vehicle. It takes you to where you want to go in the zone. But you can do it for the cost of a bus fare. And for our riders who have limited mobility, and for our riders who have fixed incomes and need to watch their budget, like Raul, this is an option that provides both flexibility and cost efficiency. Under the Keep SA Moving Plan, the design is to expand the Mobility Demand Service to additional areas throughout the city, including throughout the south side where Raul was calling from. So we would actually see an increase from Mobility On Demand from the 17 square miles that we have now to up to 300 square miles across Bear County. I'd like to go ahead and go to our poll results. We just had a poll question. And the question was, "Which of these short-term priorities do you find most important?" The answer, connecting more people to jobs and expanding VIA. 35% of our participants tonight said that that was the short-term priority they found most important. 25% of our participants 25% of our participants said they felt that improving customer experience and convenience was most important, and 40% of our participants said that maintaining VIA Trans services, our services for our paratransit customers, is and should be our most important short-term priority. Again, this is, we're running short on time tonight, but if you call now, you might be able to get your question in. This is a live, interactive event, press star three to get in the queue, and a member of our staff will take your question, and the next time you hear your name, you will be live. And I'd like to go to our next caller now. Go ahead, Jeremy, you're live.
Hi, how's it going, Marisa? I'm glad to be with you today, I want to thank you and Marina and Alex and Akeem for doing this today, I think it's awesome. My name is Jeremy Lundeen, I'm a resident of District 5, and I've relied on VIA to get me to and from St. Mary's, where I went to school, and both UCSD campuses while doing research and other projects. I have friends at Alamo Colleges that rely on public transit, and as well as friends who recently graduated and use VIA to get to work. We all want better, more reliable public transit to get to and from school and work. And like I said, I've done my research, and I know that the Keep Us A-Moving Plan will do this and more. To be honest, I'm particularly interested in the expansion of the VIA Link service, I think that's something especially people within the younger age group are interested in, and the innovative technologies that are in that plan. I encourage everyone listening, especially young people like myself, to vote yes for transit in the November election. We definitely need to think about the future of our city and how we can move people, not just cars, and that's why I'm voting yes for transit.
Thank you, thank you for that, Jeremy, and thank you for being a valued VIA customer. I'd like to go ahead and turn now to, we're getting close to the end of the evening, I'd like to turn to our third and final poll question. And the question is, which do you think is the most important objective of the Keep Us A-Moving Plan? The Keep Us A-Moving Plan is VIA's strategic plan designed to provide more frequent and reliable service throughout the San Antonio region. And the poll question is, which do you think is the most important objective of this plan? Press one for increasing equity, press two for increasing transit investments, press three for increasing tech innovations, and press four for increasing integration and convenience for fair payment and planning. Again, which do you think is the most important objective of the Keep Us A-Moving Plan? One for increasing equity, press two for increasing transit investments, press three for increasing tech innovations, and four for increasing convenience for fair payment and planning. And, you know, I just keep going back to our caller earlier today who was feeling like he was out of options and was frustrated because he didn't have access to a vehicle, you could sort of hear the desperation in his voice. I'm going to look forward to following up with him after this show. But Alex, do you have any thoughts on, you know, what we need, what we need to do as an agency and as a city to meet the needs of folks like that during this time, during the pandemic and during, you know, such a difficult economic time?
Yeah, well, thank you, Marisa. I have also been thinking about a call too. I think when you do the kind of work that I do on a daily basis, that is community organizing, you have a principle that you measure justice by how the least well-off in the system is doing, how the most endangered person experiencing hardship is doing. And so, you know, that's just a check about what the goal of social services to me is, that we advocate for these things to be as expansive and as accessible to the greatest number of people possible, because we want to value everybody equally. I think that's the value of public transit, is that it has a suggestion of being universal. And so I think we need to remember that when we step forward in community and we speak out for increased funding for VIA, increased services for VIA, we need to keep folks like Raul in mind. As we characterize, you know, public transit as a luxury, as this possible luxury, we should actually do it with folks like Raul in mind, that everybody deserves the luxury of public transit, that we don't need to be so car-dependent, we deserve it, air we can breathe, is implied by less cars being on the road, everybody deserves access to it because it really implies a right to the city. And, you know, people like Raul have as much right to the city as everybody else. And so I think when we talk about equity, you know, we have to keep folks like you in mind.
Thank you, Alex, and we just got the results of our last and final poll question for the evening. The question was, which do you think is the most important objective of the Keep Us A-Moving Plan? Forty-four percent of our participants said increasing convenience for customers, 20% said the most important objective was increasing equity, 32% of our participants said increasing transit investments, and 6% said increasing tech innovations. Well, I'm going to go back to our Board Trustees tonight. We have two Board Trustees with us on the panel, Marina Gavito and Akeem Brown. The focus of our panel tonight was millennials and transit. Millennials are living through times of economic dislocation and technological change. History tells us that the combination of technological change, like the advent of smartphone technology, television, radio, combined with macro forces that shape behaviors like the Great Depression or World War II, can lead to societal change that can last generations. And with the advent of the pandemic, we may well be at the precipice of one of these generational shifts, and millennials are at the forefront. Marina, let's start with you. In your view, how can improvements to transit now set VIA up to prepare for this future?
Thanks for that question. I think that we need to understand that when a city has a good public transportation system, that's an economic boost for all of us. You know, we talked a lot about equity tonight, about closing the opportunity gap, Alex and Akeem did a great job with that. And we need to realize that we can all do our part for our city by investing in our public transportation system. And one of the other things I think that we should realize is that we are, I think millennials in general are very environmentally conscious people, and I know, I don't mean to throw stereotypes around, but I think that I can safely say that. And so, taking public transportation is a smart choice to take, to make for so many reasons, not only for the environment, but for our personal time back, for helping our city, reducing traffic for others, there's so many great things, and I kind of feel that the millennial generation is up for the charge to make that change.
Thank you. Akeem, we have 30 seconds or less for you, what are your thoughts about preparing for this generational shift?
I think the Keep Us A-Moving Plan is doing that, period. I think, you know, improving coverage through our system, expanding, creating an equitable and accessible system for all of San Antonio, you know, I think about the fact that we just celebrated 300 years of our city, let's think about the next 300 years. We talked about the environmental impact, we talked about the impact on people, 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 and so Keep Us A-Moving is considering all of those things, and I think that's the way you do it.
Thank you for that, and we have come to the end of our time tonight, really appreciated the discussion tonight, thank you for calling in and participating this evening, we appreciate the opportunity to answer your questions. If we weren't able to get to your question this evening, leave a voicemail after the event by staying on the call when we end, and you'll be transferred into a private voicemail system. You can also send us an email at keepusamoving@viainfo.net, or call our office at 210-517-4715. We will be back at it again, we have three more of these events every Wednesday for the next three weeks, so go to keepusamoving.com to register for this event and stay informed. Thank you again, and have a great night.